Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the June 19th, 2014 Cituate Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Nicole, would you like to call the first application?
Sure. I'm going to put up a request to the zoning board of appeals to make changes with regard to the comprehensive request to make changes for covering the permit issued on January 16, 2003, Stockbridge to relive the trust. Project is located at 96, 90 to 96 Stockbridge Road. The applicant submitted a letter requesting a continuance to next month's hearing, which is July 17.
Okay.
Motion to continue to July 17?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Second.
Besides that, discussion?
No.
Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. So if anybody is here on the Stockbridge Wood matter, it's not on. Come back.
All right. So our first application is one of the South River Partners LLC is requesting to discuss with the zoning board, proposed affordable offsite housing for the special permit filed with the town clerk since 2015, 2009. Property is located at 160 Greystreet.
And I would excuse myself from this one, but will be the audience has any questions regarding the Affordable Housing Trust and land purchase.
Okay. So people understand, John is a member of the Affordable Housing Trust and as such, signed the purchase and sale agreement. So Mr. Sullivan?
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're thankful for the opportunity to be before such an august board. So many smiles.
You go flattering us again.
We submitted what we thought was a pretty comprehensive application. As you may know from your earlier experiences and participation, this particular development was back a long time, primarily because of appeals by abutters that were ultimately dismissed and also the market generally, the financing market generally. Things have been rather quiet. And we did have a property lined up in Green Bush, which we had a contract for, subject to being able to ascertain the boundaries, because there was kind of a piece of land that has probably been cut up several times. And, but we came to the conclusion about three months ago that no matter how you cut it, there were too many inequities, excuse me, too many inconsistencies, and we really couldn't tell where the lines were. And by the time we got engineers to be able to do it and then deal with the abutters, it just wouldn't work. Coincidentally, we ran into a surveyor who actually had worked on the Cituate Affordable Housing project. And indeed, he's the one who drew the plans for the one we're proposing to use now, which is on Stockbridge Road. And you do have a plan showing that. And you also have a plan showing the, the plan that I gave you from the Boston Sand and Gravel, you have a small copy of, but it shows you that indeed, this is the land that Boston Sand and Gravel had beaded to the town of Cituate. But this particular piece is the one that is used for the substitute for the disposition of garbage and so forth. And that piece, I think it's lot six, I have crossed, I have indicated by pen and ink, or maybe it's blue ink, where it is. And so the plan that is being looked at by Mr. Lynch is the one that shows Paul Meribito's plan for three building, for three buildings, all to be affordable. And it's under the common driveway special permit. The planning board has already approved all three of those lots for affordable housing. One lot is the one that Michael is talking about buying right of way, and that's the one that the contract, the purchase and sale agreement relates to. However, the other lot is going to have two houses built on it. And that's the one that Michael is doing additional work with respect to the areas of access to the sewer line, access to the water, access to a lot of things. And that's all been priced and so forth in conversation with the Affordable Housing Board. And there is, an agreement has been reached, which would allow Michael to buy that lot for $1, and then do the construction work on it with funds that he will borrow, hopefully from the, from the trust itself, and that's something that was being looked into, or then the one that he has with the same lender who has provided the funds for that whole project to date, which is South River Condominiums at 33 Central Street. Our interest is in being able to bring this project to a conclusion well before December 31st, 2004. And in fact, with a degree, a small degree of luck and good fortune, we might very well have it all done by the end of December. If you were to go down there, you would see that great progress has been made on the two remaining buildings that had not been built. Phases one, two, and three were built, and they've already been reflected in the amendments to the, the special permit that was issued some time ago. So in my transmittal letter of May 18, 2014, I indicated that there were a number of reasons why this should be done this way, because we don't have to go through the same kind of rigmarole that you have to go through when you, all you have is this, is a, when I say, oh, I don't mean to diminish it, but a special permit that authorizes a transaction, but you still got to go through the various boards at the state level. And then, this has already been done, as I understand it, by virtue of the statute upon which the Cituate trustees are relying upon. And it also has all kinds of provisions in the statute and in the condominium, excuse me, and in the trust document itself, which would really authorize lending of funds. And as I understand it, there are substantial funds available. Michael has indicated that the way that he sees it, he will be able to have that affordable unit built within two months. And he's got all the plans and he's got everything lined up. So in essence, what we'd be asking for is for the board to agree that in the alternative to what is said in the special permit as amended three times, I think, it would indicate that we would be authorized to rely upon the Affordable Housing Trust and to get going. And you would then have reason to recognize that that affordable unit is indeed going to be built. And under the substance of that special permit, it was looking for a single unit, and that is what will be built. And the trustees themselves are really in a position, if through some inadvertence that we don't expect to see, Michael wasn't able, for some reason or another, to complete the project, the affordable housing project, that more than likely, they would be in a position to take care of that. But I don't see that as anything even comes close to a 1% chance of happening. I think that if you have looked at the, the plan that was prepared by the surveyor or the architect for Sand and Gravel, I was mistaken. It's not parcel six, it's parcel one. And that's, that's where all of the transfer of garbage and so forth is being handled. But those properties up above, you can see a dashed line which goes, which goes over, which is about maybe an eighth of an inch above the parcel one designation. It indicates that's zone A2. And there are other houses up there, but where I put the arrow and the check mark, that's where we're proposing to put it. And that plan that you have, Mr. Lynch, the big one, that shows that Michael and I are prepared to, you know, respond to any questions you have. But the way that the special, the way that the shared driveway works is that there will be one principal driveway, and then there would be a cutoff that went straight to the second lot. So we're here to respond to any questions or anything else. Do anything that you need for making a decision as to this arrangement. And as, and as Mr. Allen indicated when he stepped down, he'd be available to respond to any questions about the trust.
Okay.
Actually, no, it isn't. Not this part.
If you, if you could just review for, for us and the audience, under the permit for the village at South River, you were to build just one or more than one?
One.
Okay.
Offsite.
One offsite.
That's it.
Okay. And so the, the unit number 163 would fulfill that?
It's already, they're already in that position.
Okay.
All three of them, even though we're only buying, he's only buying one.
Who's, who's going to be building, I mean, you're not going to be building lots, the other two?
No. I'm going to, but he is going to be building the connections for the water line and sewer line and the electricity and a lot of other things that have been worked out with the board of trustees.
For, for lot two?
For lot 163.
And then, and then?
And, excuse me, also, and also for lot two. Yes, correct.
Okay. So even though you're only building one dwelling, 163, you're going to provide?
Services for the other, for the other one.
And who?
And do the clearing and put the roadway into the other lot.
And, and, and do we have any idea who's proposed or is it proposed, who's going to build those other two units?
Well, dialogue has gone on, and John can probably talk about it much better, but dialogue has gone on in the course of some of these meetings, where Michael has agreed that he would be holding himself available to do whatever they need done on those other two lots for compensation.
Okay. Well, sure. I can understand that. You're obligated for one, you're not going to build three for one.
Right. We'll have to do it.
And how many square foot is this house going to be?
Approximately 2,000.
6,000 square?
2,000.
Oh, 2,000.
2,000 square feet. But 18, 18 some, 18 and change is what, I'm thinking that's what they had approved on the lot.
And did your permit state a particular size that the unit had to be or anything like that? I mean, just out of curiosity.
But we wanted to make it, we, we, this would be a heat, John, the housing authority wanted a three bedroom. We have three bedrooms and two bedrooms at the village at South River, but we're going with the larger one and going with the three bedroom unit plus, so our, our units go from 2,000 to 2,500 for the bigger ones. But, you know, this is kind of like 2,000, this would be the 2,000.
And so is this the same design that you're using at South River?
No, we're going to do something a little bit different. Because we have the Antucket style, and we have the big townhouses that go straight up, they're completely, it wouldn't be the same style. Townhouses, you know, kind of like a more vertical, they're four stages. The Antucket style is kitchens and living rooms and master bedrooms are on the second floor, take advantage of the views. It wouldn't be practical in this area really to do something like that. So we're going to keep it more conventional, which is more conducive to, you know, children and it's kind of like a more neighborhood type of thing.
Sure. And, and Mr. Sullivan, will you just, could you just review probably, not just for us and, and those that are here tonight, but people who might be watching on TV about the, how ownership of this unit would be, given that it's a, an affordable house? So how that would work?
Well, the way that we, we see it, and the way that I think John sees it as well, is that if he, if the trust decides to be the lender as well, then the deed would go to Michael. Michael would give back a mortgage to the trust, and then they would advance money on an as needed, as proven basis. And in the, in the package we gave you, I believe we gave you the, the cost and composition of the various component parts.
I, I don't remember seeing that.
And I apologize. And I can tell, I can tell you what it says and give you a copy. This is, this is something that we worked out after the day meeting. The completion of the driveway and utilities to both lots, concrete foundation poured and backfilled would be $60,000. The completion of the frame of the house, the windows and siding is $80,000. The completion of finished carpentry and fixtures is $40,000. And the completion of the landscape and pavement at the beginning of the common driveway is $9,000 for a total of 189. May I bring this to you?
You certainly may. Thank you.
Earlier, I indicated that the, the planning board had already approved this, and that decision was March 30, 2011. I believe there's a copy of that in the package.
There is.
And what they approved was the, the common driveway for these three lots.
And, and ultimately, the property would be rented or sold?
If it's sold, person qualified under the, under the, under the Housing Act of Cituate.
But rather than being, I'm sorry, rather than being conditioned, excuse me, rather than being required that the unit that remain affordable for a period of time, this is forever.
Excellent.
Unless, unless it falls down.
And, and if this goes through, you hope that you can get this house built within a couple of months?
Yeah, a couple of months, two to three, between two and three months, I can get it as close as.
And what was the timeframe on the permit? I know we've amended it like a million times.
It was supposed to be completed by December 31st as to the affordable unit, I believe.
2014?
Yes.
Okay. So you'll be?
No, excuse me, 2013.
And we extended that?
Well, we sent in a letter about that, and then in the meantime, we've started talking with the, with John here and some of the, that the, one of the, one of the selectmen, who was also a member of the committee. And we sent you another letter indicating that we were looking into this possibility of, of doing it with the association and the, excuse me, with the trust. And then in the meantime, we ended up with a contract for the purchase.
Okay. So, so our timeframe is passed, right? Do we, do we need to extend that perhaps?
Please.
Can we, can we do that without, we, you didn't have to advertise this, or did you?
I didn't advertise this. I mean, if you guys, if you have to do a substantial change, then we can go through the whole process of advertising.
I'm not seeing a substantial change here. Well, I think, I think I would, I would prefer that we kind of take care of that housekeeping matter, so we don't run to any problem with that. But, and so what, what you're looking for us to do is to approve this lot and this building in substantial compliance with your permit requirement of an affordable house offsite?
Right.
Okay. All right. Well, I think I have my questions answered. Philman?
I wasn't here for the previous permit, so I'm, I don't.
You've heard it all.
Yeah.
It's, it's a long, long history, if you can believe.
Was it a specific piece of property that was in the, in the earlier permit, and we're just substituting this? Is that?
You, you mean, did we, did we anticipate using the Green Bush property when we got the permit itself, the special permit itself?
I haven't seen the permit. What does the permit say?
It only says that it's our responsibility to get an affordable housing unit offsite in Cituate.
Okay.
It's pretty much that bright.
Okay.
Yeah. You were probably here for the original one?
I think I may have been and out. That was during the period of time when I was phasing out and then coming back, so. I have no problem. I think the, we probably need a motion to determine that the extension of the date is insignificant, insubstantial, and that the, and that the proposed site meets the intention and the requirements of the special permit. Is that, and I, I don't think, if we vote the first, we don't need to worry about advertising the second.
I think that's true. All right.
I second the, the first.
Well, wait a minute. Yeah, but we, we have to ask if anybody has any question first. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this? Okay. Seeing, seeing none, just like at town hall, see, no, town meeting. Seeing no opposition?
Move that, move to find that the, the date specific for completion of the offsite affordable housing unit, having been passed, is extended?
Retroactively.
Retroactively to?
December 31st, 2000.
I'm thinking December 31st or June 1st, 2015. I mean, I don't want him to have to come back here and if he, if we get into a weather issue.
He's going to get it done. I don't care. If you want to extend, I, we'll give you, we'll give you a year.
A year, no, I'll have it done before, I'll have it done by September.
I'm sure you?
June 1, 2015.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So you've got an extension now. Do we have a motion regarding the site?
Move to find that the site proposed at?
163 Stockbridge.
163 Stockbridge Road, according to a plan by Ross Engineering, dated March 12, 2010, meets the board's expectation and requirements associated with the special permit for North River?
Village.
Village.
Village at North River.
The village at North River.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
South River.
South River. Is that good?
Thank you very much for your?
Good luck. It'll be great to have it done.
Who's writing that, or is Walter writing that?
Mr. Sullivan, are you going to be, oh, no, I don't think we have to write that up. I think it's, I think I, this is, no, this is not a 40B. We've done this last time. I, I get this confused.
It's supposed to put this in writing, though, so we have a record of changes.
Yeah.
Even though you're not required to, but if, say, Neil and I leave, nobody's going to know that you guys heard this change.
Good idea.
Okay.
And I'd like to keep that in the file.
That's fair enough.
You want me to say?
If you could do that, that'd be super.
I'll have it here tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your kindness. Bye-bye.
Thanks, Walter.
Mr. Sullivan, second.
Trustee of the Affordable Housing Trust, is that, do you expect that the trust will be happy with the decision of the board?
Yes. We'd also put the restrictions from the state on to the property, so.
Yeah, good, good. We would trust that you would do that, so. I lost Grasshopper Lane.
Okay, I'm ready.
Okay.
Our second application is John Barry of P.O. Box 948, and over, request NGL Chapter 48, Section 6, special permit binding, raise and reconstruct a single family dwelling in three square foot, so three year facility with five hundred square feet.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Hassett. I'm an engineer with Morse Engineering. I'm here this evening with John Barry, who is the owner of the property, and is in the audience here. We're here for a finding under Section 6 to raise and reconstruct a single family dwelling at 18 Grasshopper Lane. This property conforms with the lot area. It's 13,000 square feet and located within the R3 zoning district. It does not comply with the lot frontage or the lot width. 100 feet is required, and this lot only has 75 feet. It's currently developed with a single family dwelling. This dwelling is a one-story house. It's in fair condition, and it's located all the way back at the rear of the property. If you're looking at the plan, Grasshopper Lane is at the top, and I've colored, I've outlined the footprint of the existing house in red, so you can see it's a pretty big footprint. It does not comply with the rear yard setback or either, either of the side yard setbacks. What we'd like to do is demolish of that house because of it being a one-story, kind of an odd size and the location on the property. And we'd like to construct a new single family dwelling located at the middle of the property, more uniform with the neighborhood. The new dwelling is approximately 33, 33% larger in great gross square footage. However, it is a smaller footprint, because we're going up to two stories. In addition to the single family dwelling, you do have a 16-foot by 18-foot, one-story accessory building at the rear of the property. By moving the house forward and doing a smaller footprint, we're able to meet all of the setbacks to the fronts, excuse me, the front, side, and the rear setbacks. And I think this will be a, a good improvement for the property and the neighborhood. I will pass around the architectural drawings with kind of some 3D renderings showing what the house would look like.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. What's the intent of the accessory? What's the intent of the accessory building? Because it's not a garage, I can see that.
No, a garage would have to be a little larger. Storage, beach chairs and such, patio furniture.
Is that gonna be a single-story building?
Yes, the detached one, yes.
Got an outdoor shower, I'm happy.
I didn't hear what you said.
Don't put the sand inside.
Excuse me, folks, I just want to say, it might be used for some living space.
Okay, I'm sorry.
John Barry.
Please, yeah, and have a seat.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to qualify that it might actually have some, I can see it being a seasonal room with large patio doors, that type of thing. No heating included, but it'd be potentially, not just for storage.
But again, there won't be water or heat out there, or you know?
I envision it, again, as just being in the backyard as a place, maybe it's a little bar area inside of it, TV, it's gonna be an outdoor living space, is what I envision.
What I was wondering when I, when I was looking online, what's that structure essentially right behind the house on the property to, behind it? Is that a garage for the, you can't see it on yours because you don't have it there, but there's a structure.
Not on their property.
Oh, there is actually, there's a barn there. The property has it right up against the property.
That's what I was wondering, it's, it's right on the property line?
It is. When I say right on, it's probably within a couple of few feet.
Yeah, it looked pretty close to me. Okay. That was actually only, my, really, my really only concern was, given how close, I mean, I know your house is almost, you know, right where it is, probably closer to it, but it's, have you thought about moving the, you know, the accessory dwelling just a little bit farther away for safety issues?
That'd be fine with that. You're thinking like five to 10 feet?
That would be great.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with that. I might, I, I think what I'd envision is putting a vegetated berm across the back of the property, because it is sitting right on the property currently. But no, I don't have an issue with that. And the, the current structure is, I think, under eight feet to the back, it's right up against, it's very close.
Sixty-nine or so.
And I, one other thing in Jeff's introduction, you should understand that the current structure's in very poor structural condition. It has a lot of issues, so it isn't just, it isn't just gentrifying, knocking down a very good building and putting up a new one, it's in very poor condition.
Well, it's a beautiful design. I think it'll be, you know, a great improvement to the neighborhood. I'm sure your neighbors will be very happy about that, as well as anybody who gets to live in it. So, and you said about 33% larger. Okay. John, any questions?
No, it seems like he's taken care of some of the issues as far as side setback, existing rear setback, again, it still has plenty of room. You can't really do anything about the lot width, that's kind of a fixed rate, but he is improving the existing, other, existing non-conformities, again, with the shed or outbuilding in the back, even that, I think the required setback is eight feet anyway. If he's gonna create a little bit more space, that's fine. And he's actually, the overall footprint's getting smaller, so there's more yard area as well, so I think that seems to be a good idea.
Mr. Barry, do you have, are you the abutter on the parcel to the east?
I am, I own the property to the east.
Comments on your neighbor's wishes to?
Very pleased with their proposal. That's good.
Frank?
The structure's gonna conform, right?
Conforms in every way except, except the lot, nothing to do with the lot.
So, under, under Gale, what we've got is you've already identified your, it's your frontage and your lot width, that's a, that's a 10,000 square foot area?
Yes.
Yeah, so you've got that, so that, those are your only two non-conformities. You're actually not going to intensify or create new ones, so.
Existing.
Or, yep, so, if, do you want us, let us know how, how, how much you're willing to push the garage up?
It's currently proposed at meeting the setback of eight feet. I would suggest, can we go to 15 feet, move it another seven feet?
That would be great.
Okay.
That would just be the rear, not the side.
Off the rear and-
Yeah, yeah, off the rear, okay. Anybody in the audience wish to speak on this application? Here we know opposition. Someone have a motion?
Move to find that the proposed raise and reconstruct is not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. Under Gale, that's all we have to do.
I don't even think we have to do that. I just say, only, only if, only if it's intensifying the existing non-conformities or resulting in new ones.
So, I'd find that it's not intensifying any existing non-conformities or resulting in new ones, that the proposed use and structure are consistent with the neighborhood, not substantially detrimental, and the increase in square footage of approximately 30% is not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood.
With the caveat that the applicant will increase the rear setback to the accessory dwelling to-
The caveat.
Fifteen feet.
I just, I wouldn't, that, that doesn't have to be part of our decision as much as it is our statement of the, the, the proposed plans were presented and amended at the meeting to however-
It doesn't mean anything if we don't, if we don't, he says he'll do it, I think we should put it in. I think if we thought of it, otherwise it just goes away and doesn't have to.
And that the applicant has agreed to, that the proposed single-story accessory building not be closer than 15 feet to the rear line, the subtly rear line setback.
Or the accessory dwelling, you said that, right? Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're good, thank you. Would you like your, would you, would you like your, well, someone, I, who's gonna, who's up on this one, writing that? We need to make sure we always have one in. You may want some of these paperwork back, though.
That might be up.
I just wanted, somebody, depending on who's gonna write it, some-
We can give, we can give you-
We can give you some of the-
We can give you some of the, we can give you some of the plans back, so you don't have to have them printed again.
Anthony wrote the last one, last two, Sarah, you wrote the one before that, and John, so it's either Ed or me.
Okay. Buck up, you wanna take it?
I'm happy to.
Okay.
You'll get the next one.
Make your right, okay.
That is the next, have you been, have you been looking ahead?
No.
All right.
I got it.
All right, so, I'm gonna keep mine, just in case I get called upon.
We just throw them away and you, someone always wants them.
You're welcome.
Good luck.
Look forward to seeing it. Okay. I don't, I don't, I don't know.
What numbers are good?
I know.
You ready?
Couldn't figure it out.
Mine's in my truck. You ready?
Good evening, Kevin Greedy from Greedy Consulting. I'm here along with Chris Demars, attorney for the project, and also Brad Merritt, the applicant and property owner, in regards to the application before you. The application before you is for a special permit under Section 610.2.2B, 50-foot frontage lot. The parcel is located in the A2 district, requires 20,000 square feet. We submitted applications and plans detailing what we'd like to do here. So we're proposing one lot that has 50 feet of frontage, and it meets the requirements of that section of the bylaw specifically. It's got 50 feet of frontage, it's got 50 feet of lot width. Every point between the street frontage and there is part of the dwelling. It's got two times the required area, it's 45,000 square feet, it's required to have 40,000.
40,000.
There are no wetlands on this parcel.
Are there wetlands on parcel A?
There are wetlands on parcel A.
Where exactly would they be?
This is the lower part, yeah.
Is that it?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, so there's this line here.
Okay.
So it's well, well back, it's a 40-scale plan, so it's hundreds of feet back. It's a fairly straightforward application. I'd be just, just happy to take any questions if you have them at this point.
Actually, I have one really basic question.
Sure.
I could not read this deed. Which, which parcel is being referred to in this deed? I figured out, I figured out parcel-
You've read the deeds, that's, that's good.
I did read the deed. I figured out parcel one is house number 483, and, and that's, that's where I ended.
So, Chris Demars, attorney for the applicants.
So I'm sure you read the deed.
Yeah, the, this, the title to this is Anything But Simple. The, my clients, the Merritts and their family have owned basically all of the tracks on this side of the countryway. Yeah, if you look at the plan, you can see Merritt, some form of Merritt is every one of these. Right, so, you know, the, the title traces back to almost 200 years, and it's gone through probates as opposed to conveyances, so it's, it's involved, to say the least. So, during the title examination, what we discovered is that my client owns in his own name individually now this parcel A, and then on the front of the plan up here, it's the, where the house is located.
House which number?
What number?
93.
493 and 495.
Yes.
And then the lot next to that, that triangular-shaped lot, is owned by him and one of his heirs, which we're trying to probate now to get title vested.
I'm sorry, you, I've totally lost it now.
So lot 16, parcel's lot.
Is there a house number on that lot?
There is not, that's-
Okay, is that the, the one, or is it Kenneth Merritt?
Uh, yeah, Brad, so it's Assessors Parcel 32716.
I'm lost. Right.
So, my client owns this parcel, this one's owned by himself and relative, it's Kenneth. Kenneth's since passed.
Okay.
Twenty years ago, so we need to probate a chain of estates in order to vest the title back to my client, so this one's owned. He owns this, also owns this individually, but this track back here is between himself and his, and the same relative that owns this. So we need to probate the estates to obtain good plan title to this lot and this one, which is kind of why we're doing what we're doing now, because it's gonna take a long time, there's about six farm directions we have to go through to get there.
Is Egypt garage on this property?
What's that?
Is the garage on this property?
No.
Or is that the next?
That's next one down.
Next one down. No, the Egypt garage, Egypt-
That's number 467, it's in that dir, it's-
It's the next one down, it's underneath, it's underneath the-
The north arrow.
The arrow.
Yeah. Yes, exactly.
Okay. So currently, currently parcel, lot one and parcel A are, 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 is that one lot?
We're making lot one buildable.
Right.
We're leaving lot A unbuildable, but potentially accessible through the, the neighboring parcel, which is owned by family members. And also potentially by taking out the house, you could also get access to lot A in the, sometime in the future, although these are not obviously lots that are subject to our application here.
Right.
But creating the 50-foot allows them to free up that now without, without isolating the other parcels.
What's 25 feet gonna do?
Well, he owns the house next to it, so you can add the two together, and he also owns that all, that huge-
Right.
Or he expects to have potential access through family members to that large parcel beyond.
Correct, this is why we need to-
Lot A will not be isolated.
So the short story is, this does not reflect parcel, parcel lot one. Is that what you're saying?
Lot one, no, it's, I don't know, I'm sure exactly which deed you're looking at there, but it's probably referencing parcel A, which is roughly five and a half acres, I believe. So, we're taking out lot one out of that parcel A.
We're creating lot one.
Reference parcel A.
Parcel one, lot one is a subdivision of that deed.
Correct, okay, exactly.
But where's parcel A on, in the, in the deed?
It didn't exist because it's being divi, divided now.
Right, lot one is being created now.
Right, I understand that.
Yeah. So where in the deed?
But what used to be lot, what used to be parcel A plus lot one, is that in this deed somewhere?
Yes, that is. Assessors Parcel 20. So that, this, the most recent deed, booking page is gonna see on that, is book 4635, page 438.
And do, do we have that, that's what I'm trying to-
We submitted, oh, which, which one did you say? 4635? Yeah. 4635, 438. Yeah, we did submit that.
Can you direct it to me? Because I'm, like I said, I'm trying to figure it out, but, this is where I wish Anthony was here, because this is what he does, I think.
These pages are not easy to follow. We've spent a lot of time-
This is why I know I don't realize that.
So, is there, are you missing a page?
Wait a minute. This one? It's parcel three? Okay. For the one that's really easy to read, because it's Thomas Pratt heirs, by the land of Thomas Bailey, by Joshua Downs heirs, by, okay. All right. Oh, lordy, okay.
That side was very difficult to navigate. I stole some stuff from them, I believe. Did I? Shadrack, Shadrack and Bendigo. Shadrack, who's the second one, and Bendigo?
You have any questions?
I'm trying to remember the Bible. Who's the other brother, Shadrack something and Bendigo?
Mieszak.
You have any questions, Ed? Frank?
Let me?
Do you have any questions?
I don't.
Anybody in the audience wish to be heard on this application?
I do have a question for the board in reading the bylaw. So on Section 610.2B3, where it references any lot that received a special permit in this section, it will be further subdivided.
Correct.
So our intent with, with doing this, obviously, is to gain access now for this lot to build this home. We're, we would like to, in the future, develop the rest of parcel A once, you know, either we get ownership of these lots up here, or full ownership of this larger budding lot, this five and a half, to make that work. However, in the event that we can't, we're hoping to possibly down the road, either do a shared driveway, coming in with the same driver, we're proposing now to access parcel A, or either do the compound development situation, which come in with- Again, off a common driveway. Right. Those require 100 feet of frontage, where your bylaw says no further, is it subdivision? Yeah, no-
Further division.
Subdivision.
It says subdivision, it should be division.
Right. Would this approval preclude us from- From doing that? From doing that?
If you, you, if you utilize the lot to develop, if you leave- If you, you, if you utilize the lot to develop, if you leave the lot as a fifty-foot frontage lot? But if we change it, if we make it a conform, a fully conforming lot, where you say we can not re-divide it, could we make it a conforming lot? Does this approval preclude us from rearranging this lot to make it a conforming lot? I guess is the question.
Conforming would have to be a hundred-foot frontage.
Which we could, we could add parcel sixteen to part, lot one, and then we'd have a hundred feet of frontage, you know, potentially. Could we rearrange the frontages? In the future. In the future.
Right.
With the, 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 the way the bylaw is written, it's, uh. You can't divide it. But does it say, but it doesn't say you can't add to it. So if you were later to acquire land and abutting it, added to it, creating a fully conforming lot. I'm not an attorney, but I don't know how you could avoid, how you couldn't do that. The, the concern with the fifty-foot frontage bylaw, the intent of it was not really to do what you're doing here. It was to get access to backland that wasn't available. There wasn't enough frontage on the house built on the street. And that, rather than have that land isolated, make it available for a family home, that type of thing. It was the intent.
Okay.
So when you, when we do, when we use it for this sort of a thing, we're not necessarily following the intent, but we're not, but it's consistent with what the bylaw says. So what you're now saying is, we want to do this, but if later we want to use this lot for, for access to the backland, now we're really, we're standing on our heads, if, if you see what I mean.
Right, but we would arrange the lot to be conforming.
You would have a restriction on your deed already that says you can't further subdivide it.
Can't further divide it. Yeah, it's not being divided, though.
He's adding to it.
Right.
Right, but my assumption when you're asking the question is you want to make it a fully conforming hundred-foot lot, so then you can, can come back in and subdivide it.
And the only reason we're doing that is because we're having probate issues, and they want to build a, and we expect to clear that, but the owner of the property wants to be able to build a house for his, for his kids. Now, rather than when it gets all probated. Instead of waiting to go in the future. And I did get the same, I, I talked to Neil Dogan about this, and he had the same opinion you did. And we just wanted to make sure we were clear here as well.
Yeah, well, I, I think if you're looking for assurances or guarantees, I think you should get none. That would be my, it, you know, who knows what the bylaw's gonna say? Who knows what case law says?
I didn't know what it says now.
You, you, you're, but you're doing, you're doing something that I don't, I don't remember ever doing on this board. I don't remember it ever being presented on this board. So I'm not saying you couldn't, but I sure wouldn't sit here today and tell you, oh, absolutely, don't worry about it. You may well be precluded, and I think you, you proceed at your own risk of whether or not you want to do that now or, or wait. But to, to say, well, if we add to it, we'll have a hundred-foot of frontage, so we should be fine, and we can go in and subdivide it, I don't know the answer to that. And, um, I don't, I mean, I just don't think you can be guaranteed on any, any direction.
I guess another question is, is in the event that, that does not happen, and we can't make it a conforming, because we can't get that other parcel next to it. So can we come back in to get a further special permit in order to act, use the same existing driveway to put two more house lots and have a shared common driveway situation?
That's a planning board issue. That is, that goes before the planning.
Yeah, yeah. And, and you can do any, you know how it is. You can do, you can ask for anything, whether or not you, you'll get it or entitled to it is completely different story. You know?
Clearly, if it, let's say this fifty-foot frontage lot goes out, went out of the family, and the person owning it later found a piece of property next to it. Not, forget the fact that we can, we can predict this. And all of a sudden, I have a fifty-foot frontage lot, I buy the parcel next to it. If they were undersized lots, they'd merge automatically. So why can't I go in with a A and R and subdivide a larger part, larger piece of property?
Right.
But you're the attorney. Is there a cloud on the title because there's a deed restriction?
That's the, that's the question. I guess.
That is a question.
It depends who's interpreting, and when we come back here.
Right.
Is what it comes down to. Or what the court agrees.
You have to do the special permit.
Right, well, it says it may not be, that lot that's approved may not be further subdivided. You're not, we're not further subdividing lot one. We're adding to it and then subdividing the remaining parcel A. So that's, I guess you're.
I, I'm, well, once you subdivide it, parcel A is not a part of it anymore.
What is the purpose of not being able to re-divide? Because we're, the, the intent of the bylaw, again, was to create a situation where we avoided potentially subdivisions that, in places where they weren't necessarily required by the ownership or desirable by the ownership. The only way you could develop land prior to this was you had to do a subdivision. That, with all the associated costs and streets and everything else, this allowed people to put a home in the backyard, that type of thing. That was the way it was sold to the town. I, I seem to recall it was a town meeting, or I've heard it discussed so many times, I think it was a town meeting.
Probably a child.
But the, my, my father would have been active at that time. So the, but further subdividing it meant that, oh, we're gonna do this now, but in the future, we're gonna have a subdivision back there. We didn't want to, they didn't want to have that. They, the, it was being granted with twice the lot size in order to allow for development, and the, and the exchange for that fifty-foot frontage was decreased density and less likelihood or no likelihood of a subdivision where one was not needed today. Up there?
Hi. Did you discuss this with Brad, or what? How much it would be? No, I mean, we have, there's a twenty-day appeal on. So we could, we could close this? Yeah, I think so. Then what happens to the appeal? Withdraw. Withdraw, so we have twenty days to withdraw? Is that correct? I mean, we would have the twenty-day appeal period to withdraw for this, uh, this special permit in the event that we decided that the rest will be found over information about that.
If we voted it?
Right.
If we voted and you got approval on it and, and didn't record it, it wouldn't exist.
It doesn't exist, right.
Right?
Right.
Uh, I don't know the answer to that. So if we, we voted on it, but you didn't record the decision. Who records the decision? The applicant?
The applicant. So after twenty days, they move the town clerk, gives them a cert-type copy, didn't want to appeal it. It's their responsibility to go down and put in registry of deeds in five weeks.
And what if it's not done?
Doesn't exist.
If it's never done, they, they can't come in and ever get a building permit, but I don't know what happens. I mean, they need it in order to get a building permit.
Would you be interested, perhaps, you might want to continue and think about it? And we could talk about some of these other issues.
Yeah, because we can.
I know.
You could. You could ask, you could ask for a continuation of this hearing.
Right.
Right. You might just want to, yeah, continue it, or, or with, you can withdraw it, but we could always come back.
Right. But then they'd have to reapply, and they'd have to re-fee. So they could, they could continue for now.
Yeah.
Come back in a month or two months.
Is the next, July seventeenth the next meeting?
Yeah, and they can always just withdraw if they change. If they can change, you know, who isn't writing to me, and I'll take it off.
We, we would have spoken to you before, but this is the best.
It's really the only way. We can't, it, it would be lovely if we could sit down and have a chat about it, but we can't do that. So you've done exactly the right thing here. And, and I'm, really, I don't think we can give you the answer that.
It's unfortunate future.
Right, right.
Very difficult.
This is obviously an unusual situation.
Yeah, I don't think we're ever having it.
And the probate situation doesn't unfold quickly, to say the least.
There's good, there's a good opportunity to, you know, use the bylaw and do some low-impact development here. But we're trying to, you know, get something now, because there's housing needed. So do we decide to request a continuance?
Yeah, I think we're gonna continue.
Could we request a continuance to the seventeenth?
I think, Nicole.
You have, you have. I can get them on the July seventeenth, but you haven't writing to them tomorrow.
Yep, absolutely.
And then I can, I can just request.
That's what we need to have, a requ, a handwritten request for continuation.
Move, move to continue this until July seventeenth?
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you. Thank you.
Good luck.
I think the fifty-foot frontage lot came in fairly recent, relatively recent. I don't think that goes back to the. I think that might have been in the seventies. The fifty-foot frontage.
Honey, the seventies are forty years ago.
I know, but I was, I was, I was attending town meeting.
Forty years ago is a long time.
Hey, you turned eighteen, you voted in those days.
Okay.
Good luck.
Well, that was really.
Just because you weren't born then.
Oh, yeah, right. Oh, my God, I can embarrass to tell you.
Right, right. I just jumped that one to someone else now.
Yeah. I mistakenly told a partner, at Morrison Mahoney, asking who's associate. He goes, I've been associate for a long time. I go, oh, you just look so young, you don't look old enough to be a partner. It's like, oh, you slipped. That was.
Sweet talking lady.
Family interest. See what's gonna happen on that.
I would think you could. Mar, is that what?
No, you just can't give any guarantees, that's for sure.
But the egg boy, I think they could.
The egg boy's the one.
They'd have some.
I'd like that to be my dad, though, I'll tell you.
I was wondering whether you could come back and vote. And then start voting. Just the board. You vote it. Vote under the, under the fifty-foot. Why can't you create a lot? As long as you're creating a lot, there's residences, there's a lot.
Okay, next.
Our fourth applicant this evening is John McAtier and Mary Beth Parknoly. Parnell. Parnell? Of one seventy-nine, Judge Cushing Rose, which requests NPL chapter forty-eight, section six, special finding. We can start creating non-conforming, second-in-law, and twenty-two.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Maureen Hurley, and I'm representing John McAtier and Mary Beth Parknoly, who are the applicants. And with me is Alyssa Jones, a residential designer from HC Design. The plan was prepared by Cavanaro Consulting. I think you have that with you. He did the site plan. And we, the applicant seek Master General Law forty-eight, section six, special permit finding to raise and reconstruct an existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at twenty-two Collier. The non-conformities are, there are four non-conformities. The lot width, which is supposed to be for the, it's in an R-three zone. Supposed to be required is a hundred feet. It actually has sixty-four feet. The frontage is supposed to be one hundred feet. It has seventy-five feet. The lot area is supposed to be ten thousand square feet, and it has seven thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty-two square feet. And the last non-conformity is the existing garage is actually almost on the lot line, if you can see on the plan there. And it's required to be eight feet from the lot line. The new garage will actually meet the rear setback of eight feet. The lot is not in the Water Resources Protection District or the Flood Plain and Watershed Protection District. It was built in nineteen-oh-five, and attached to the application is the assessor's card, which indicates that it was built in nineteen-oh-five, and therefore precedes the zoning adoption in town. What's existing there now? I may let Alyssa explain to you what is there now and what is proposed.
Sure. As you can see from the photos on the board, and I believe there are photos in the packets provided, the existing house, a single-family home, as Maureen pointed out, it's over a hundred years old, and it is basically falling down. It's dilapidated. It's, um, it's an eyesore to the neighborhood. And, um, so our clients are interested in constructing a new single-family home. It'll be a shingle-style home, be in keeping with the neighborhood. And the detached garage, we're proposing to locate it in the rear of the property, which is kind of the only option for a two-car detached garage. But we are improving the location of it, yeah, because the existing garage is directly on the property lines.
It's over.
Yeah.
Oh, no, maybe not, maybe not. You have a little crook in your lot, your lot, right?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so, all right. What is the current square footage of the, of the building? Do we, do you have that on here?
Um, the existing square footage is eighteen-hundred square feet per the assessor's card and about four-hundred feet of covered porch.
And what's the proposed?
The proposed square footage will be roughly three thousand square feet of living space.
So you need, you also, you also need a, what?
They, yes, they need a finding under eight-ten-point-two. Yes, Master General Law chapter forty-eight-six and eight-ten-point-two.
Okay, that wasn't, what have we been doing on that? Because that has, that wasn't advertised that way.
Is that more than twenty percent?
Yeah. And I'm, I'm unclear, do we have to advertise it if it is?
It wasn't included.
Was not?
It wasn't included in the hearing notice, but, um, I don't know. I think you can add it.
I think we've had.
They're requesting a special.
I think we've had, with a special permit file, we have added it in the past.
Yeah. I mean, they did request a special permit filing. Usually, there's language that says, or any other, which needs the board made.
Is that what that says?
Lawyers will put in there. That isn't in this one, but.
No, I'm talking about in the advertisement.
No, that is not in this advertisement.
What do you guys think on that issue?
I think it's, it's within the four corners of the advertisement. I agree.
Okay, all right. Just cleaning it up. All right. All right. What were my notes?
So the proposed structure will meet all the zoning requirements. It'll meet all the setbacks. The garage will now meet the setbacks. That was one of the non-conformities before. The other issues are to do with the lot area, so we can't fix those. But definitely, the new structure will enhance the neighbor, the neighborhood. It's unsightly and dilapidated, the house that's there right now. It looks like it's ready to fall down. I think teenagers have been attracted to hanging out there. Certainly, the plans, the proposed plans, it will look a lot better.
Do you have drawings, proposed drawings?
She has draft, they're not complete yet, because it's, it's under agreement. They haven't purchased the lot yet, and they didn't want to go forward and actually do complete plans until they knew, this was part one, was to see if it would get approved, and then they will purchase the lot and then go forward with the buildings. But we have a draft, yep, we have drafts of what will be there.
Do you have square footage of the existing and the proposed?
Yes.
Yeah, we just did that.
I think it's twenty-two hundred existing with the porch. And then three thousand proposed.
I knew we just did the discussion. I didn't hear the numbers.
Front elevation and then the side elevation.
And then the front of the garage as well?
Yes.
Are you, are you guessing at the proposed square footage? Because we don't want you to do that. Oh, no, no.
No, I think the exact layout of the house is what's not been determined. The size has been determined.
Okay, so three thousand square foot.
Could I make it, would it be a problem to make it thirty-two just to be, but I mean, that would be at the outset, probably. It'd be thirty-two hundred. I'm just looking for a buffer, I don't want. I'm sorry, I'm John McAtier.
He's the applicant.
I think it would be a good idea.
Just in case.
Because the permit would say, not more than. Because obviously, we can't give you a permit with just carte blanche, and then you come in and do a, you know.
Twelve thousand square foot house.
But you could always do less.
You could always do less. Yeah, it looks like a lovely design, though. I'm sure, um, I'd also be happy.
Is there much pitched to the lot?
What's that, the lot?
Yeah, was there a pitch?
Yeah, we are on a hill. It goes, yeah, from the top corner is elevation a hundred and four, to the lowest point is ninety-nine.
It's a five-foot difference there. And it kind of pitches back toward the garage, too.
I don't know if you, any of you had a chance to view the home, but it's in tough condition.
Yeah, I, I always look online, I used to drive around, but I just can't get a job anymore. But I did see it online, and it, it didn't, didn't look great. But it's a great location. Fabulous location. Ed?
No problem.
Frank? John?
No, same thing, it looks like they're taking, addressing some of the problems with the setback of the existing garage, and maintaining the setbacks that they can to conform with the house, and they really can't do much about the lot area in the width, so.
Okay, anybody in the audience wish to be heard on this application? Yes, sir.
Brian Jones, Six Michael Lab, we're immediate butters, and on that little ten-foot section, kind of behind the southwest.
Yep.
Here with my wife.
Used to be, used to be the Joneses?
Still out of the Joneses.
Oh, okay.
Brian Jones.
Oh, I thought, I forgot, I thought you said the name was something else.
Brian Jones.
Six Michael Lab.
That's what I heard, I was paying attention to Michael.
And just want to go on the record, they were very much a favorite, because we've been looking at, we've been there for forty years, we've been looking at that house, and various states are just repair, birds are in there, bombing hearts, so.
Good.
Positive time.
Anyone else?
Yeah, young at fourteen Collier, and we're happy to have things kind of go forward on that property, although it does still have its charms.
I, I saw you applied for your demolition permit, you know about that.
Well, they did give granted, by the way.
Oh, they did, okay.
But don't take it down until we have, until this gets approved.
That's right. Yeah, they, okay, all right.
What's, what's there was a two, a, let me see, two-story, four-bedroom, and what's going to be there, replace will be a two-and-a-half-story, four-bedroom, shingle-style home.
Right.
So it's just, it's just larger.
Yep. Well, okay.
But we added, we created that new bylaw that.
Oh, the twenty percent, yeah.
That's relatively new.
That's where the A10.2 comes in.
That's very.
So do you need a percentage?
We're just gonna figure it out.
We need to draft one, but we can do it. Given those numbers, we can do it, but those, we're relying on your representation here. And it will say that the new, new building is intended to be approximately, since we don't have a plan.
Eighteen hundred, okay.
So, I mean, if we supplied architectural plans, you would still be just going off of that square footage number that we supply.
If you provide architectural plans, then we would be voting those plans specifically, they would be part of the decision. So you're, in some ways, you're better off not to have something that detailed.
Yeah.
And your draft proposal gives us an idea of what you're trying to do. We can, I think, make a decision that going twenty percent larger than what exists there, or more than twenty percent larger, is not going to be detrimental to the neighborhood, or not in keeping with the neighborhood, or anything else. I mean, we, we've all have an idea of what's there, the two houses that were built across the street recently, and the, you know.
Yeah.
So do you also want me to go through the criteria in nine fifty point three?
You can.
Okay, so the board, because I think all three of the, that forty-eight six, A10.2, and nine fifty point three, so the, specifically, the subject property is in appropriate location for the proposed structure or use, because it is residential structure. The proposed use as appro, is the appropriate location, I'm sorry, the proposed use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. There will not be undue nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians as a result of the proposed structure or use. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided to ensure the proper operation of the proposed use or structure, and there will be, not be any significant impact on the public or private water supply.
In pursuant to Gail, you have identified the particular respects that they are nonconforming, and you will not intensify those existing nonconformities or create new ones. So then, under Gail, I think we can issue the permit.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we have a?
Move to find that raise and reconstruct the structure at twenty-two Collier Road, situate by Cavanaro Consulting, dated five twenty fourteen, no revisions, is not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, that it will not create or increase any nonconformities under Gail, and that the structure, although twenty, greater than twenty percent, a larger, will not be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood under A10.2.
It should not, should not see thirty-two.
So a hundred square feet.
The, the, we'll, we'll write in the actual numbers from, going from twenty-two hundred to thirty-two hundred square feet.
No, eighteen hundred.
So you said twenty, existing?
Eighteen hundred is the enclosed heated living space, and then there's.
Twenty-two hundred is the, the porch is part of the footprint.
With the roof on it.
Because it's got a roof on it all the way around.
Right. Yeah.
So twenty-two hundred.
I would say it's, you're going from eighteen hundred to thirty-two hundred.
Twenty-two hundred to thirty-two hundred.
To thirty-two hundred.
Well, but we have a covered porch.
Yes, and they're counting that as living space, so.
But in our new design, we have a covered porch, so that, if you want me to include the new covered porch, then that would be, that would increase over.
All right, so we'll, we'll go back to eighteen hundred.
Yeah.
Not including covered porches excluded.
Whoa, what are you saying here?
Well, the covered porches that are, that exist on the existing house, there are going to be some covered porches on the new house.
So I'm just trying to look.
Although they could, at some point later, be closed in and become part of living space, so they actually should be included in. Can, can you get to the twenty, can you take the thirty-two hundred and bring it to whatever it is?
Well, gross floor area does not include unenclosed porches.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's how I always viewed it, too.
Well, that's what the bylaws says, and we got to do this, and I just, I'm not quite sure.
Eighteen to thirty-two.
Eighteen to thirty-two, gross floor area.
Right. Gross floor area, so by definition, it would not include your porches.
Okay. Even though later they could close them in without, without coming before the board?
Yes.
Why would you?
Why wouldn't you?
Porch like that, on the water?
You cover it up, you go up, and then you put another one up, but you don't cover it.
Put the deck on top of the.
Been done many times.
Oh, I'd die, I'd die for a porch. Okay, all in favor?
Kathy knows what I'm talking about.
Second, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Go for it, go buy a house.
Thank you, thank you, I had a, I probably had a draft decision, but I didn't cite, you cited Gail, I, I did.
Want to just email it, and we'll, okay, let me give you, you my email, and then I'll just edit it up, yeah.
You can, you'll take this one and edit it.
So I didn't do, the only thing I didn't do is the numbers, I just used all the language that you've used before in the same type of decision. Okay, what's your email? Oh, you want me to do it? Let me come up here and get it quietly, go.
Did you go through Nicole?
We got a lot of drawings here.
Well, this would be easier than Nicole, doesn't it?
Talking about maybe doing like alarms.
Oh, okay. I saw you wanted to be. Can't believe what you said.
And there's your porch.
There you go, we'll get it out.
You're fourteen? Yeah, we're fourteen.
Just, just send it as, right as it is, and I'll add the, because we always have a line for other, for other decisions.
Maureen, do you need to, yeah, these, thanks for this.
I'm gonna go to mine until it's written. I've decided that, because I've, I've had him come in looking for decisions.
When, when Gail came over, we basically started recognizing that we were limited on some of the decisions, because as long as we make that finding, we kind of have, so we, just in general, we start with Gail.
Yeah.
And then we add whatever else.
Okay. Usually with the rockwood, snow, yeah, you can get one.
I don't think we're gonna know, I don't have a site there.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Feeling a little overwhelmed with all these suits in here.
I, I know.
They're leaving.
You should be a little scared. You know, all of these properties are just gonna be, I just, you know, slowly but slowly.
How are you doing?
Oh, they did figure Pope. I'm ready if they're ready. We have to make a correction. The name is Pope.
Yes, I, that was mine, I was, you, he came in last minute.
You were doing at the last minute.
I was leaving for my last day, and.
That's exactly right.
That's what I get for rushing, right?
But you did make it to my.
I know, Georgia Madeline, that is a little familiar, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's kind of like Frank and Cher, you know, we all, we all know who Frank was, and we all know who Cher is.
Frank and Cher?
Frank.
Frank and Sonny, Sonny.
No, I, no, Sonny, I'm, I'm, no, but Frank Sinatra, Sonny, you know, Sonny didn't go by, but Frank Sinatra and Cher.
I just never thought of him as a.
No, they just don't, I mean.
I don't think so.
You're one of those.
Right.
Our fifth application and last application this evening is Georgia Madeline's quote of nineteen eighty-one.
Like the one in Rome.
Yes, request MGL Chapter forty-eight, Section 6 Special Permit Finding for Attaching Existing Nonconforming Single Family Dwelling at 22 Collier.
The property is the former rectory to St. Francisco Breney Church. We bought it from Cardinal Maderos, I think nineteen seventy-four, seventy-five. And what we're proposing, or asking for permission, is to, we built an addition, a family room off the back of the house. Just off the, I mean, proper house. What we want to do is to go a little bit further out, about eighteen feet out further, and make a common wall with the garage. Now, the nonconforming part of the property is the garage. It's nine feet, nine inches from the property on the side. But it was, the house was built in nineteen twenty-nine, the whole thing was built in nineteen twenty-nine, and and as my wife said, we want to age in place, so we want to make this a big family room now, so you can see the facilities and stuff, and when we can't go upstairs, make it into a bedroom. Don't want to make the living room a bedroom, don't want to make the dining room a bedroom. And that's what I propose.
It's an R2 difference.
Okay. And you know, I, I had talked to Neil, and he confirmed, he said he was familiar with the property, and he knows that the garage has been there for, you know, forever.
I think it was part of, part of the original.
Well, you'll see on Paul Marobito's map, there's a big chimney in the back field. And that was part of the original house that was built in nineteen hundred. And that was collapsed, torn down years ago.
The chimney's still there?
Yes, it is. I wanted to tear it down and make it into a stone wall, but my wife is part Italian, and Arthur Pompeo tore the house down, and he says, you can't take it, it's a work of art. So it stands that, I hope it gets hit by lightning some day.
All right, so now the card, the Cardinals sold the Pope the house.
They, you know something, they made that observation.
And, and you're telling me the Italians don't want to take down the chimney because it's a work of art?
That's right.
And, are you gonna paint the ceiling in this garage?
Well, we're gonna get an artist, Sistine Chapel, right?
Help me out, though, your not, your existing garage is nine feet, nine point nine.
Nine inches from the property line on the side. We've got a hundred thousand square feet to the whole property.
But it's a sideline setback, and isn't that, isn't that eight feet in the R2?
They seem to think it was fifteen feet.
Fifteen in R2?
I actually looked it up, because I wasn't, I wasn't sure.
R3 is, it's eight, R2 goes to fifteen.
I think it was, was it last month, we had a similar situation?
Seven ninety-nine, Haveli Road, you approved it last meeting.
Right, you know, the only difference I see is that they weren't putting a second story on the garage.
Oh, okay.
And that's, that was, you're not, you're not raising and reconstructing the garage.
Absolutely not.
Right. That was my only issue, is the second story on the garage, other than that, I have zero issue. So that was.
That was going to be an apartment for if we had somebody that had to take care of us, they could live up there. That's all.
I, I understand that, that, I understand the, the reason you'd like that, and I think it'd be a very nice addition, but I'm a little bit concerned, because now we are.
Increasing the nonconformities.
Increasing the nonconformities, and we're, we've had other people come before us in the same situation, their garage is very close to the lot line, where you're adding an addition to connect the two, which is not interfering with that.
It makes the whole house nonconforming.
Yeah, it's just, it's just adding to it by going up, it is, you know.
Is it increasing?
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a concern for me, so I didn't know what my other question was talking about.
So what's there, what's there now above, on the second floor of the garage? Is there space, storage space?
Bicycles hanging from the rafters.
Yeah, and then the, the roof goes up.
Oh, it's a second story, it's a, I thought you said.
I know, it's a window, isn't there a window that?
Yeah.
So in the, there's some, some storage space in there now with a window?
No, I don't think there's a window in the storage space, we use it for storage, we store bicycles, Christmas stuff up there right now.
So there is a second story on the garage?
Well, I guess, I, I, to be honest.
Kind of an attic, second story.
It's attic, that, that's the best way, we hang the bicycle.
Okay, are you having to redo the roof when you do the new addition?
I don't know. We've got the architect's stuff in here, you've got his rendering there, right?
Yeah, and it does, it looks like a, you know, very nice addition.
I don't have the.
You what, you don't have this? All these, all the renderings.
And you've got the copy that he did pictures and stuff like that.
Oh, where the pictures are?
Oh, yeah, there, yeah, yeah. I don't want it to interfere with the TV. All right.
But the second story is simply dormers in the existing roof.
Well, that was my question, and it's.
A lot of the existing roof is staying on the edge.
I'd argue that's really not increasing the nonconformity, and that it's, they're just dormering the roof.
Well, it looks like it'd have to be more, you don't have much, I don't know if it is, that's the problem. I mean, I don't know that you can tell by this, by these drawings, that they're dormering the roof, or they're putting a new roof on. I just don't know.
Well, they may be putting a new roof on, but that, it shows the roof line, it's a hip roof.
I, I told them I only wanted dormers, I don't want a shed dormer and anything like that. I think it makes the copy look better, too.
I thought, are there other pictures of anyone sitting here?
I gave you all the copies I had that he had pictures there.
Oh, yeah, those are what I want to see.
That was.
Nicole, do you have the original one, maybe the pictures are a little bit better for, for me to see.
I didn't think I needed the architect of Paul Marobito here to make my case.
The other argument you can make here is that they're decreasing a noncon, nonconforming aspect of the existing garage by reducing it to two bays.
You cannot make that argument.
Why not? I can make any argument I want.
Yeah, no, that you can't.
Pope's here, you can, he'll bless it.
So you're gonna change it to two bays?
You're gonna, you're not taking part in the first bay.
Probably bigger, wider, the same thing, but just not.
Oh, it's gonna, why couldn't they just move the wall?
Oh, here it is, look at this, look at this, there we go. So I think this clarifies it. You're holding out on us, Mr. Pope.
Pardon me?
You were holding out.
No, you had, I don't.
Yeah, because see, this really does show that you're not, okay, you're just reconstructing on the inside, you're not adding to it. I'm feeling much better.
I'm feeling much better, too. I'm feeling much better, too.
Yeah, this is, um, do everybody see this?
You got concrete floor and concrete wall.
It does not look, you're changing, it does not look like you're changing the roof line, or is you are absolutely just adding dormers? Okay, okay. So you guys, pass that down.
But I'm fairly confident the neighboring lot, it's a good lot. Your neighbor, um-
To the right.
To the, the gable end, the gudrow, gudrow.
I talked to him, he says anything he wants.
In his, your, your, the end of your garage-
Right.
Faces the rear of his home, correct? His home fronts on Hood Road.
The end of the garage probably faces the side of his property, not his house.
Right, but his house is on Hood Road, and-
No, no, his, his house is on Mary's Lane.
Oh, his is on Mary's Lane as well?
Yeah, here, let me look at this.
His name is Bob Goodrow.
It's just the side. Across from, across from the porch.
Oh, that's right, you're, you're more, I was thinking it was the first one down here.
No, that's, uh-
Yep.
No, that's on the other side of the property. I brought them all in, all the neighbors, and let them look at the plans, and I, I typed, Bob, do you wanna come over? He says, no, no, he says, whatever you wanna do is fine.
You told him you were the Pope.
I was surprised when you sent the notice, I just sent it to people across the street, too.
Yeah, that's Nicole.
That was okay.
This is the, this is-
He has a radius.
Oh, there's a radius there? Okay.
That's the, this is the old plan? The house could've burned down.
John's very familiar with the house.
May we keep this for the file?
It's all for you.
Thank you. Okay.
Nicole, you've got a whole bunch of that stuff, right?
Right, this is, yeah, but we, you didn't have, she didn't have this.
Yeah, she did.
Did she?
Yeah. That was included.
Oh, it was, no, you didn't photocopy this. No.
That was in every, in everybody's packet.
How often I've been to church there.
Yeah, we just didn't get the photocopy. Okay.
I'm sorry if I screwed it up.
No, you did.
Neither you and me.
No, you didn't, you did, fine.
I'm not blaming you.
Blame the Pope for the trouble.
I know you heard you talking about it, but you were very inclined to accept it.
Okay, well, if we make the same, you know, the same review under Gail, what you're proposing does not, oh, no, the, the particular respect in which the existing structure does not conform is the-
Garage.
The garage setback of nine-point-nine feet, rather than-
Fifteen.
Fifteen feet. And you, your proposed addition would not intensify the existing non-conformities, conformities-
No, no.
Or, nor would it result in new ones.
It wouldn't?
It would not. Do you think it would? Why do you think it would consult, why do you think it adds new non-conformities?
Well, it's basically making the house, not just the garage.
But Neil's position is accessory structures on the lot are part of, can be attached to the house because they're part of the, is, as he's read the definition.
Okay.
The accessories, well, it actually helps.
Yeah, but the accessory, um-
Even if it's fully attached to the house, it's still an accessory.
No, because it's, the non-conformity exists for the whole structure because it exists for the-
For the garage.
The outbuilding, the accessory building.
I think that was what, yeah, I think that's what he said.
That's his position. Which, which allows you to join it without increasing the non-conformity. I'm trying to remember where the-
How does that differ from what you approved for seven ninety-nine Halley?
I think we thought, found that there was a, did we find that there was an intensification? It doesn't mean you're out, it just means we have to take one more step.
Okay.
So if we say it's an intensification, we just have to say there's-
No substantial detriment.
No substantial detriment to the neighborhood.
What did we say the last time, Nicole, do you have that on your thing?
Yeah, from last month?
Yeah.
Last name was a Greek name like Papadopoulos.
I'm just, I'm thinking of the one on, on Third Cliff, no, that we, that was right down the street. Remember that? And we decided that-
Maybe for different reasons. I think this is much, really, really right on from, from the Hadley Road property, where the, the house was conforming, but the garage was over, and we connected it. It wasn't an issue.
I'm having a hard time remembering.
One ninety-seven Hadley Road?
Yeah, I think so.
Let's hope you find that the proposed addition for the plan by Cavanaro dated November does not create any non-conforming, so the special permit should be granted.
Right, I think that's what we said.
Sorry, it's trapped.
That was my memory.
Okay.
Okay, you good with that? What are you looking, are you still looking for the definition there?
It's, 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 um, single-family drawing is a building containing one drawing unit and allowed accessory uses. It must be, it may be out of the state building code that Neil has the, I think that was, it's the building code that Neil quotes when he says that a dwelling shall include the building and accessory, customer accessory building.
Okay.
Yes.
So like, the detached garage is part, the non-con, the non-conforming nature can be applied because the non-attached garage-
Is applied.
Is in, is applied.
Okay.
Which makes people have to come in.
Right.
But along the same lines, attaching it, it allows people to attach it without increasing a non-conformity.
Okay.
It has, has to cut both ways.
Correct. Oh, yeah, oh, let me see those. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Okay.
Looks like you're gonna be able to age in place.
Pardon me?
Looks like you'll be able to age in place.
That was my wife's phrase.
A good one.
It is.
With so much property, why they cited the house there, makes no sense to me.
Cause they had the other building behind.
Well.
All right, do we have a motion?
Move to find under Gail that the proposed connection, the proposed addition does not intensify or result in new non-conformities?
Does not intensify existing non-conformities.
Existing or result in new non-conformities. So do we vote that first, or do we just go forward?
And so that, no, I think you can vote it all in one, you know.
And therefore, the proposed addition and referencing the plan by Teriarchy Architectural Design dated May twenty-nine, two thousand fourteen, and the plot plan by Ross Engineering dated May twenty-seven, two thousand fourteen, shall not be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, and... That's it? Or do you have anything, wouldn't it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, folks.
So do I get that one?
If you, I'll bore you just a little bit. The guy who, the, the house up back was, you know, was like a three-bedroom house with a stage. And the guy who owned it was named Larson, Swedish guy. And anybody who was a Swedish descent who came to the United States would say, I have a job. Larson would give him a job. He happened to run the vaudeville circuit for New England. And Mrs. Dunphy, who's since passed away, lived up the street, she said, she saw Peggy Cass and Bob Pope down there and performed. And he built the house as a wedding gift for his daughter, who married the chauffeur. And one of his sons went on to found Time Inc., and you'll see the name Royal Larson, Jr., in the masthead. And the other son ran the pillar house on one-twenty-eight, which is the only restaurant I knew that they had so much business, they never opened on Sunday. Now, there's the history. But thank you very much for your consideration.
Did they end up moving the pillar house? I remember there was a lot of discussion when they were-
Oh, they sold it.
They sold, but, didn't they actually move the building?
I don't know, it's kind of like the columns.
Yeah, I, I think there was some discussion that had a big-
I went there one night.
It was a big deal, I can't remember whether they got moved or whether it wasn't moved. Whatever it was, it was a big controversy.
I took my wife to dinner there one night, and I said, can I speak to the owner? So the guy comes out, and I said, is your name Larson? He says, yeah, and I said, we own the house in nineteen Mary's Lane. He said, oh, that's where my father lived. His father had moved to Arizona. So I got the whole history of the house.
Oh, it looks like a beautiful house.
It is.
It's a nice house, it's a nice house. John's been there.
Yeah, I should be a listener.
Well, Neil said, and I think he came to see-
Pardon me?
I think he said, came, Neil's came to see the priest seeking dispensation from something.
When we first moved in, kids would come to the door, and my, we have, we have three little girls, they're grown women now, but, you know, like six or seven, or four or five, or something like that, my wife would greet them at the door. And they said, does the priest live here? No, no, they live over there. Thank you.
Thanks, George.
You guys have got a tough job, I've listened to the stuff tonight.
Oh, my God, I didn't even bring any of this.